You're good?
You're good.
Super. Welcome, everyone, to the Lincolnville Select Board meeting. It is the 12th of December. Before we get going, Kern, would you read the quote?
I'd be glad to. "You cannot cross the sea merely by standing and staring at the water." Rabanoff, Rob, Rabindranoff, Tagore.
Nicely done. Thank you.
Works for me.
I think you did well.
Yeah.
I think you did well. Now, I'd like to open the podium for the Citizens Forum for any non-agenda items. And seeing no hordes of citizens rushing up to the podium or waving their hands, let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
All I have to report beyond what's on the agenda tonight is that dog licenses are due by the end of the year.
Can come into the town office or do it online.
Correct. Town office during normal business hours or online 24/7.
Perfect. Then let's move along to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the town office unless announced otherwise. The Heart and Soul Team Meeting is meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, December 13th, noon at the Community Library. Cemetery Trustees are scheduled to meet Wednesday, December 14th, 5:30. Broadband Committee Thursday, December 15th, 6:00 p.m. Comprehensive Plan Review Committee Thursday, December 15th, 6:30. Town Office will be closed in observance of Christmas Day on Monday, December 26th. The Lakes and Pines Committee Meeting is not, that's on the agenda, is not being held this month. And the Select Board meets next on Tuesday, December 27th, 6:00 p.m.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And is there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing none, let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 28th of November.
The Board approved that November 28th, 2022, meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we welcome Matthew Eddy, the Executive Director from the Midcoast Council of Governments, who has a presentation to offer us.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Good evening.
And thank you for having me. Finally sat down with David after we both tried to bump into each other for a while to talk about Midcoast Council of Governments, a little bit of background for this area. We have reformulated ourselves and now include Brunswick and Topsum, that area, Harpswell, Sagahaw County, Knox County, some members from Lincoln County, the larger communities, and also received a state grant for municipal technical assistance which includes Waldo County. My understanding is that you folks were members of MCAED, the Midcoast Economic Development District at one time. We evolved from MCAED into MACOG, Midcoast Council of Governments. And I came on last April as the Executive Director. If it hadn't been a council of governments and been broader base than just the Economic Development District, I probably wouldn't have taken the job. We're really trying to do something a little bit different here. But I'm also trying to figure out how to best serve Waldo County and the communities in Waldo County because we know that there was, you did have a Regional Planning Commission at one time. That Regional Planning Commission folded. There are a variety of different groups that have come in and tried to provide services. And we're trying to establish a consistent provision of service, technical assistance, and collaborative planning throughout all of the region. But we're trying to bring some additional coordination here. So my point, my, my goal here tonight is just to tell you a little bit about us, what we do, how we provide technical assistance, what we have for staff, and answer questions for you. So this is our mission statement, excuse me. This is our mission statement that was approved by the Board just about a year ago that in fact moved the organization from an Economic Development District to a Council of Governments. And it's really about providing technical assistance, about providing regional coordination, an economic development strategy. More than anything, it was about developing a strategic plan for the region and then figuring out the resources we need to carry out that strategic plan. Mike, you attended the session in our General Assembly.
Yes.
That was that last session that we were really doing on the strategic plan. We had done a whole series of focus groups over the course of the fall. Also did a survey and began putting together a strategic plan for the organization. Our technical assistance is varied. We do a lot of work in municipal land use planning. We're in high demand. We're in about, we're, we're doing specific projects for about 10 or 11 projects, communities right now. And that list is, I'm getting around to different communities and I'm telling people what it is that we do. We're getting a lot of requests for us to do more and to do things for them that they wanted to do for a while. We do economic development planning. We have our own loan program. And we have reserves of about a million dollars to be able to loan out to local businesses. We don't usually, we're not usually alone in that. We usually team with a lender. Maybe there's another finance organization. But we bring a skill set and a little bit more of a personal service than, than most agencies do. And I mean by personal service, we got one and a half people. Who you're talking to is a person that'll ultimately make that decision. We have a Loan Board that oversees that work. And it's a program that's been around for about nine or 10 years that we hope to expand. We do sustainability, resiliency, planning and implementation. And I'm going to go through these in a little more detail. Regional and subregional coordination. I'll give you some examples. Community development services, particularly in the CDBG and Northern Border area. And cooperative purchasing, which I, you know, I don't know what, what group David participates with, but we can link you to the GPCOG Cooperative Service Program. Now, there's some questions about dues and what we pay. I sent, I sent David a number today, which is coming out of my head, something like $2,000 and something dollars, based on $1.25 per cap. And the, I wanted, I provided this slide just to show you what we do with it because the Municipal Planning Assistance Program we get from the state requires a 40% match. And so we put the, we apply the dues to that. But it creates our ability to provide a planner that's designate, dedicated to technical assistance and planning. We get assistance to do community development block grants. So we use a little bit more of our dues to match that when we have to do some expensive CDBG work for a community that can't afford it or is in an emergency situation. Same thing with Northern Border Program. The reason we originally had an Economic Development District was because we received EDA funds. And we're the, the, you know, the, we're the recognized agency by EDA to provide reviews for EDA programs. If you have a program, a project, infrastructure project that services business development of one kind or another, it can be pretty broadly based. Your project needs to go through a review process, a collaboration process with the other communities in the region. And we utilize the money we get from EDA and the match money to provide another planner, a second planner that works in that area. We have our rural development, main regional development loan programs. And we're looking to, as, as we're, I like to call it recovering as an agency. As we're recovering as an agency, the three areas that we think that we are going to get additional funding in. Main Department of Transportation, who we're talking with them about a contract for this coming year. Governor's Office of Innovation, GOPIF, where the Sustainability and Resiliency Programs are coming out of. And we have, in the last six months, gotten a couple different grants for communities for a total of about $50,000 to help them through resiliency planning. And we hope to grow that program more. And then what we anticipate coming out of Department of Economic and Community Development for Housing Partnership Grants, in which we're going to get some money. We're going to really begin to spend time working on issues associated with Florida housing. This is our staff. I'm the Executive Director. I've been planning in Maine since the early 1980s. And I've done just about everything there is to do in community development planning and municipal assistance. And I love my work. I'm still doing it. I still enjoy doing it. Brian Dankos, our Deputy Director, is really in charge of our Business Assistance and Loan Program. Does some grant writing and runs the EDA Program. Max Johnston, who you may have run into, I think, Mike, you've talked to Max. Or some, somebody in the Comp Plan Committee has talked to Max.
I think somebody, I talked to Meg, Meg.
Yep, Meg, yep. Meg handles our Sustainability Program. Max does our Land Use Program. And Micah Martong is a new Contract Planner for us that does land use planning and community development. Meg, and then Hannah Ritz-Sisk does a little bit of our website work. And Charlotte Nutt is our new planner who has an amazing, for, I'm enjoying working with some younger staff members. She has an amazing GIS head and can do a lot of GIS mapping. And has begun creating maps both for us and for communities already. And so there's a great potential for mapping your community in a little bit of a different way. It's definitely a tool and source for comprehensive planning. We intend, as we grow and we begin to build this budget, to probably add at least one more planner. And then we'll probably top out with what I think we, as an organization, can provide and afford. We have a technical assistance policy. And we break our technical assistance into services that are free. This first page is mostly what we can do for free. And what we're trying to do is meld the, the technical assistance money that we get from state agencies with our dues to be able to provide a certain amount of service for free. Consultation with Planning Board, Select Board, Town Councils. Email correspondence, offering opinions, particularly related to LD 2003 is an example. Minor amendments to ordinances. We're doing three different communities' minor amendments right now. Richmond and Vinale Haven in particular. We'll do one detailed site review for something that you have that's a little more complicated than your planning board is wanting to do anymore, a third-party review. We can do that for you, subdivisional site plan review. Written review of municipally owned development projects, things that we help you through with business parks, those sorts of things. Meetings with town officials, assistance with Northern Border Program, assistance with the CDBG Program. Mostly educational, hearing what your project is, figuring out whether it's eligible, whether there's a reason to put together an application. We'll do that, initial research. Tax increment financing and all the aspects of creating a district and creating a program for the district and then helping you figure out how to manage that. And then community and individual business development assistance. We do surprisingly, because we're loan programs, we spend a lot of time talking to businesses. Since I've been here, we've talked to probably a dozen seriously and a half dozen that are coming, becoming actual loans and applications and going further. Where we begin to chart a fee for service, and that's negotiated based on hourly rates and the number of hours we think a project's going to take. And we provide that in detail to you. We figure that out in advance so that you've got an idea. And for some communities, they'll pick and choose what they want to do. And, or put some of the things off to, to another year. And that's fine. We just want to make sure that you understand the menu. But when we get into substantial modifications and development of ordinances, frequent meetings and the adoption of those ordinances, you know, the, the process sometimes is as difficult and lengthy as the actual drafting and writing. Development reviews, we contract with Bath right now, for example, while they're looking for a planner to do all their development reviews on the come-through. Comprehensive planning assistance, you know, helping communities go through the community engagement process, through the writing process, through, we'll do some of the basic data development and map development for the process and, and work with committees. And specific project development, we're in the, we're in Union right now, helping them with a, a project on Route 17, a business development project in which we'll work through Steel Pro, sorry, the name was going out of my head. Steel Pro, where we'll help them through the site review process. We're going to do a wetland swap for them to better utilize the property they're on. And we'll probably do a TIF district for them and some ordnancy right in that area. So that's a fairly substantial project, a good example where a contract was warranted. And as I explained, as I always explain, if we do a TIF, you know, we can figure out how to pay for our services for you if that value is there, so. The business development and loan services is one we're anticipating growing. And this is really one where you on, on the local level can identify through conversations. You hear about a business that's interested in doing something in your community and needs that extra financial boost. The bank may not be willing to lend them the entire amount. We take on that loan piece. We take on the risk. We usually take a second or even a third position. We're not there to lose money, but hopefully we're closing a financial gap to help that business move forward. And it's, it's something that I've participated with on local business programs. And we've got a real, really good potential system we've got in place to grow and expand that. We'll help businesses obtain grants. We worked with a community, we worked with Davis Scott recently to help them with a business that was interested in getting a grant. We got that grant all the way through the approval process until the business actually pulled out on their own and decided they didn't want to do that since then more, which happens. We are looking at regional and subregional focuses, what we're calling a hub of excellence, which is essentially an amalgamation of, of a region's assets. And our region is really pretty interesting because coastal, the fishing community, a number of research institutions from one end to the other. Some really good vocational and edu, community college training programs, one end or the other. We think we can develop this hub of excellence and be recognized for certain industries and development. You know, everything for basic, obviously with, with BIW and a lot of the precision manufacturing that goes from one end of the region to another, which is not unusual for Maine. We're well-known for our precision manufacturing. But things like aquapulture, hydroponics, other kinds of agricultural pursuits. All those things we think we can bring together and, and really develop a brand for ourselves for this region. And I think it's unique. Business development strategies and, again, tax increment financing and helping businesses move forward. As Mike mentioned, Meg Rasmussen handles our Sustainability and Resiliency Program. And we do everything from collecting and analyzing data, developing baseline information, formulating a plan for the community, taking a look at your capital assets, the emissions issues, things that are subject to climate change impact, stormwater surges, stormwater runoff. If you're focusing to meet, you probably have issues with both. And then implementing the plan and helping communities find resources to do that. There's a lot of resources available on the state and federal level. They're going to be there for a few years. And so we're really encouraging communities to really think through their capital improvement programming and think through their, 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 the issues that they're having related to stormwater and runoff and increases and potential impacts on docks and work with us to help position you for funding that's available. And then regional and subregional coordination, you know, among a bunch of different areas. Transportation planning. I generally tell the story, I don't, was anybody here involved with Gateway One? David was. I was too. You know, I represented Brunswick on the other end. And Gateway One was one of the better transportation planning solutions tied to land use that was done and won national awards. Unfortunately, the inheriting administration eliminated the program, one of the most planned programs. And all of the good work that Gateway One was developing went out the door. Well, the report's still there. You can still find it online. And it's still valid and it's still good work. And all we need to do is begin to update it and get it back on track. We're hearing issues about affordable housing everywhere. It is an epidemic. It is a particularly difficult issue on the coast, you know, in coastal communities. It's a particularly difficult issue because of short-term rentals. And the market for outside investors, whether they're buying to live in them, buying to live and work in them, or buying to rent them out. You know, the, the money is changing the market. And we're seeing it inland just as much as we're seeing it on the shore. So it's a big concern for us. We work in areas of natural resource conservation and preservation. And in terms of the hub, we're really interested in developing industry clusters that the region can be relatively well-known for and attractive for. We do community development, housing business park development, re-adaptive uses for public and private structures. We have a fair amount of experience in writing grants, whether it's EDA grants, CDBG grants, Northern Border grants, we can help the community do that. Or a local business or a local organization that's interested. You, you folks are really unique that you have the Heart and Soul Program here. I've participated with the Heart and Soul Program in Bitterford. It's a good one. It was a game changer for the city of Bitterford in terms of helping them redefine what they wanted to emerge from and not be a trash town anymore. And it really created an energy and a vision that essentially painted the Comprehensive Plan for us and really shifted the direction and shifted how the community was investing its resources. It was a game changer. So, you know, that's something that you're working on already that we can utilize in a lot of other activities that are going on in the community. And then cooperative purchasing, we participate with the Greater Portland Council of Governments. Max handles that. And, you know, annually, we will, we will consolidate different folks' interests in cooperative purchasing and consolidate, you know, into GPCOG bidding process. Some folks use the county, I know. Some folks use the state. You know, I haven't spent enough time looking at it, but my general understanding is that GPCOG is a, is a pretty effective program that gets you the best dollar that you can, best use of your dollar that you can get. And then finally, we really did finish this strategic plan up. It's going to the Board of Directors Thursday this week. These were the seven primary goals. You can get on our website and look at it in detail with the things and the activities that we're going to take on. But it's really going to drive the next five years and our work plan for the next five years and what we're doing for communities. And generally, sense of place and really strengthening, helping strengthen communities through land use practices and investment. The hub of excellence I talked about a little bit. The state is excited that we've embraced that. They've initially provided some initial funds that we're going to utilize over the next two years. Bringing more federal and state money into the area, that is something that all our communities were really interested in doing. So our goal is to do some short, long-term range planning and position communities to obtain that funding wherever they can. Housing, we've developed a housing program. And we've got good partners up and down the region that are interested in that. Sustainability and resiliency. Communication, that's us. You know, we, you guys didn't hear about us, I'm pretty sure, until I knocked on the door and talked to David. Or I was a figment of somebody's imagination. And, and so we're building our website. We're building our communication strategies. We hope you're getting emails on what's going on and our monthly news blasts and that you're sending those news blasts out to other members of the community because we've got some pretty good pieces of information in there. And then what came up during the, the strategic planning process was the whole issue of displacement of native Maine folks. You know, folks that have been here, worked here, worked on shore, been here for a while. The fact that they're getting displaced, their kids can't afford to find a house. They can't afford, they're getting pushed out in terms of jobs. And there's a need to shift education and shift it more to technical training services. And we found that issue of displacement and inequity to the folks that have been here for a while to be the prime concern that's occurring around the region. And so we've identified this particular piece of diversity, equity and integration as our focus. We're not sure what we can do about it. I mean, I can tell you when I, when I get into in-depth discussions and I use Booth Bay Harbor as my, my best example right now. It's probably a community most seriously affected with outside investment and the absolute inability of, of the downtown community to find workers and to bring workers out to the peninsula, all different workers, whether it's at the boatyards, whether it's in the downtown, whether it's at the labs. You know, the lab can't find people that can afford to come here and work at Bigwell Labs anymore. You know, so it, it's really, it's a structural issue that we really have to get a handle on. So, so that, those are the issues that we're going to really work on as an organization. And I'll stop there and take questions.
Who wants to start? Great.
Thank you very much. I had a few different questions that aligned pretty well with some of the stuff we've already been talking about. One that I talked about a few weeks ago was around affordable housing and, and my view that, that it's not something Town of Lincolnville has any prayer of solving on its own. And so what does that look like as you look at a regional approach? How does Lincolnville participate if, in a GPCOG scenario?
There's, there's a couple different places that we're going in terms of development. Let me see if I can get this out of here and close it up. The, the, the one area that exists that has really stepped up is that you've already got a housing trust working in the area. It grew out of the Camden Rotary, but it's now beginning to roll in a bunch of members. I think there's even a member of Lincolnville from Thompson all the way up. And the idea with a housing trust is to begin to look at ways that they can do land banking for housing, get ahold of land before it comes onto the market, potentially get involved in holding and flipping that land to developers. But more importantly, just positioning communities so that they can begin to preserve some housing for affordability, whether it's new construction or preserving existing. The second area that is of interest to me is the fact that we really don't have any development capacity in the region. You know, having spent my last 15 years, 20 years really, in Southern Maine, you know, I can call up a developer for a particular style of project and know that I can at least get them to the site, to walk it, to look at it and walk it through. We don't have a lot of development capacity up in this region. Developers that are up here right now are from the Greater Portland area. There's still, there's still Joe Plutier and a couple others, but for the most part, we need to build on that. And the only way we can build on that is to begin to develop some housing projects, some housing buzz and create that. We'd like to do a couple interesting programs that need a different level of funding. Main Housing has a community solutions program. So one of the things that we've Main Housing has a community solutions program, so one of the things that we proposed as an example um with Main Housing is to uh develop an incentive program that could take advantage of the new law that permits everyone to have an accessory unit on their property. That we would actually provide some funding through their community solutions program to help someone do an improvement to their house that creates an accessory unit that's for affordable housing by attain, we're calling it attainable, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of median income. And we think there's a real market for that. It also helps us rehab older homes and probably helps older residents stay in their house longer. So we're looking at several different ways to make that program roll out, having an initial conversation, I believe it's this week or next week, with Rockland and Bath, those two communities that we've rolled out a pilot and see if we can take off. Hopefully get Main Housing to to buy into it, Main Housing likes the idea. So that's an example of a project and that in the meantime, you know, we're willing to help communities on a one-on-one basis. If they've got a property or they've got a developer that has an interest and they need ordinance incentives or they need um the 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 tax increment financing program was amended uh two years ago to allow for kind of a unique melding of economic development tips with housing improvements and provide some level of subsidy to do those housing improvements. So it's an area that we think has some potential, particularly along the coastal area. Those are examples, but it, you're you're absolutely right, it's not a, it's not a one town issue issue. Everybody is sharing the same problem. And the more that it becomes more and more difficult to find affordable housing inside our labor market areas and where the jobs are, the more people are gonna be forced to move further and further out and cars are on the street systems and it becomes kind of a negative solution for everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, Steve?
Sure.
Yeah, you mentioned comp plan review assistance with a, we're in the middle of our comp plan process, it's just started, we have the Heart and Soul. What is what is uh MCAG's participation in that? Is it towards the end of the process, helping review and make sure that the documents meet the state requirements or?
We we do that as a free for service.
Okay.
Um you know, that that part of it, you know, we also, you know, this is my pitch, I mean, we have, we also help them right at the beginning. You know, I use the community of West Bath as an example, um you know, we've been helping West Bath update all the data in their plan and then go through the plan and redo all of their goals, objectives and strategies, make sure it's consistent with the state's strategies. And and then draft the plan and help them through their hearing process. So we can go as deep as that and as simple as just making sure that you're you're in line, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get turned down by the state. Who is now turning down more and more communities? You, I can tell you as an example of of how not necessarily to do it. Um Newcastle is going through that process now, they went through, they, it's it's unique. They they spent a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on their comprehensive planning process to develop what is now known, what is called a form-based zoning ordinance. And put that in place, but the consulting team that did the work never ensured that the plan was consistent. And the plan in the review was found inconsistent with state review and and not by a little, by a lot. They really hadn't found, followed the basic state parameters. And so we're helping them rewrite that to make it consistent and then begin to make some changes in the ordinance as they as they learn through their experience of how the ordinance work to make it work a little smoother. So that's a, that's a full gamut of of the kind of services we provide.
I had one other question, that was, you mentioned the resiliency sustainability component. And we initially think of the pier and stuff down in the water, but my head was going towards the roads. A lot of dirt roads, especially in town here where the change in the climate has caused a lot more issues with thaw and freeze and thaw and freeze. And and is there been any examples of that type of work as part of your, of that group's efforts?
Not really, because community resiliency is fairly new in the planning world. And but we do have some really good models of work that's been done down in the region I was in, Southern Maine Planning and Development, which is York County and Chippy Cog, which is Cumberland County. We're really following their example and going out and talking to more and more communities to get them involved and working with their neighbors because it's also a, it's also a regional discussion. And there are monies not only to study that issue, uh but then to come up with engineering solutions for that issue. And then ultimately, um I believe there's gonna be plenty of infrastructure money to do improvements. But you gotta do the basic resiliency planning through the GOPIF program to start with, and that's where we would help.
Okay.
Thanks. You're welcome.
That's great, no, it was good, Kern.
Um I just have one question on, we go back to the affordable housing. I may have a skewed definition of affordable housing, but in my opinion, affordable housing starts with being able to maintain the taxpayers' affordability to stay in the house that they're in first and foremost. My question to you is, we are comparatively, we're not a young community. We have a lot of retired and or senior citizen residents who own a lot of land. Are you coming after, when you, when you say affordable housing for a town, Lincolnville is a prime example of a great area to develop. But that mindset is pretty much nil in this community because of the uh because of the age of the community. It's family, it's land that's been in their families for generations and people don't want to sell to developers because they don't wanna see their land turn into affordable housing. Because the the perception of affordable housing is cluster housing, apartment buildings, less than desirable people moving into town or of things of that nature.
The state.
Are you, yeah, are you experiencing that type of conversation? And if so, I don't wanna ask how do you get around that, but how do you deal with that?
Well, first of all, I define it for everybody, you know, because there's an easy way to define what's meant by affordable housing. Because it, you know, there's there's the Section Eight housing that everybody jumps to. That that's housing that serves people at thirty percent of median income or less. Essentially, they are not working or they're they're a larger family with a single parent that just doesn't make enough money. The next group up are subsidized housing that is created with present vehicle, um that's available to developers, which is TAC, which is tax credits, housing tax credits, which serves about the next level up forty to seventy percent of median income. And that's essentially your your lower end working class. And then um the pro- the programs that we've been hearing more and more about are this eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of median income, which is essentially your middle class, your working class. And we're hearing um a need to create workforce housing, um you know, that that somehow serves that population group. We're hearing the need to create, I I've always felt that there's a need in this region to assist seniors and to assist land-rich, money-poor families. And and Main Housing had a program during the years I was there, um that was called Fix Me. That was specifically geared at eighty to a hundred and fifty percent of median income for housing assistance, upgrade housing for furnaces, roofs, insulation, things that made the house more efficient to live in. Part of my my accessory unit concept actually gets at that initial program. Because not only with Main Housing, not only would you be improving the unit so it's an accessory unit so that person could make enough revenue flow to stay there, you're probably bringing the rest of the whole house up to code as much as you can. So tho- those are the ranges of where they are. I'd like to do more and more of that kind of development in this area, I think that's what's warranted. And that the one I'm hearing a lot about are seniors with big houses that have a lot of additional space that if they could figure out how to go through the thought process and have the financial incentives to do it, might break those houses up to two or three units. And every one additional unit helps. And you know, if someone did a statistic, we would solve half the workforce affordable housing project if everybody in the coast of Maine from York to, I think it was Ellsworth, you know, did the, took advantage of accessory unit and added an accessory unit. So you're you're adding it within the infrastructure that you have. So that that program is interesting to me and trying to bring that to fruition.
I think the the important element there is the education of what is meant by affordable housing. Having an older community of Lincolnville, Sears-Mark, Waldo County in general. I think it's gonna be tough to sell that until the definition of what is being brought to the table is out there and people have to stand there.
I think if you if you look at our strategic plan, you know, the first thing we said is let's define what we mean by affordable housing and let's make sure that people understand it and communicate that message. We, I completely agree. And and you know, when you, when you get down to it, you're talking about your children or your grandchildren.
Absolutely.
And and do you want them to be able to stay? You know, um you know, I I often use my two daughters, um who probably won't come back to Maine because of what they're doing for work, but they're just down south and they make good money uh in Massachusetts, but they're not in any better shape for trying to find a house than anybody else.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You know, it's it's a tough market and and they're seeing themselves having to commute thirty-five or forty minutes into urban areas. They're supposed to, you know, in one case for Boston, in the other case, you know. I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to help them do that. And so it takes a concerted effort on a regional level to be able to think these things through and have this kind of conversation. Now, I'll say, the one thing I think I really enjoyed is the group that came out of the Camden Rotary focused on that and the workforce piece of it as well, and the daycare for our piece of it as well. Daycare's a little bit out of our realm, really, housing isn't something that we should necessarily be in, but we don't have a lot of capacity. Penquess Cap to the north of us, who kinda comes down here and plays, Waldo Cap doesn't do much in the way of housing. And down in the southern part, mid-coast Cap is not in the housing business at all. So we're we're really lacking compared to a lot of other areas of the state, you know, even poor rural areas of the state. We're lacking in capacity to address the issue. Long-winded, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Detail.
It's a big, it's a big conversation, for sure.
Well, we could go all night, we're really good.
Yeah, yeah, we could meet just about that, I'm sure. Um I have a pile of questions, if it's okay. So you mentioned Steel Pro, is Steel Pro working through the Town of Union or is Steel Pro contracting with you directly to do the work that they're doing?
That's a, that's a great question. Steel Pro, the the town has hired us directly to work with Steel Pro to put them in place.
Okay, and is that through a membership that they have with you or is that?
That's through their membership, they're they're members of the organization, they're members of the organization through Knox County.
Okay.
All the members of Knox County are members and Knox County pays the dues.
Okay. Fascinating.
It's it's a great solution for me because I'd be doing town to town to town to town.
Absolutely.
Um which is what I'm doing right now.
Well, thank you. Um well, I guess so that leads me to another question, you know, if a community, um you know, say chose that they didn't choose to afford the membership fee or there are opportunities to work with your organization outside of membership?
There is, but I, the membership is so inexpensive that I really do recommend it. Um because like we can give you plenty of free services and free consults that we really can't technically do without the membership. And I I have the political problem of I have, you know, three regions paying their full dues. And then up here, I'm getting, I'm getting tactical assistance for Waldo County, but I'm not getting any dues money. So I'm trying to get a critical mass.
Gotcha.
That can not only make it possible to do that, but also allow me to hire at least a a contract planner that could serve this region in particular and become a go-to person.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the, your membership fee is is pretty right in line, you know, I mean, it's it's what, you know, we pay more to McGonagall watershed annually for water testing and we pay more to Waldo Cap for the services they provide to us annually also. So, you know, but I was just curious if if you had businesses reaching out to you from towns that haven't yet engaged?
You know, I I'll give a good example, I mean, you know, a business in the region that's in a community that's not a member that wants a loan, we're gonna talk to the business.
Sure.
We will absolutely talk to the business and if it's in our target areas for financing.
Yep.
We're gonna do it and and, you know, again, right now, uh we have, as an example, we have a program that's new, that's related to the ARCA program funding, in which if we make a loan out of that funding base, that money comes back to our loan reserves and allows us to build our loan reserves. And that is good for the region in the future. You know, that gives us more and more reserves to lend out and provide the community.
So um so let's say Lincolnville chooses to be a member and there are the fees for service that go above and beyond. Do you have a standard fee structure or is it an organic con- conversation?
We will provide you what, we'll tell you exactly what our staffers make for a total hourly rate.
Okay.
Directed and direct rates. And then we'll we'll provide a spreadsheet for what we think are the hours that it will take to do the job that you ask.
Okay.
And we'll break it down to as many tasks as you want us to.
Okay.
And then we negotiate through that.
Okay, and typically, what's your return on deliverables once, once a plan has been established with the community? You know, what, how, how uh full is your staff schedule in 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 servicing? I mean, you're you're covering a lot of ground here and so I'm just curious, you know?
I am, first of all, the the way we operate as an organization is my office is about the size of the conference room. We're a remote organization and and we're doing a really, you know, for me, it's a pretty interesting job of using remote communication, remote meetings as a staff to put together and deliver this program that's working pretty well. You know, we get together live once every two weeks, we get together by Zoom every week. I get together with each staff person um every two weeks um by Zoom. And my goal would be to find a, you know, I've got a couple people in mind that are in the region that to find someone that I can mentor and really help through the process to provide services to the community. And with that, you get the background of the whole organization and whatever it is that we bring to the table. So I, I'm getting a little away from the question.
Yeah, no, I was just, like, let's say, um you mentioned working with Vinyl Haven on some ordinance, minor ordinance changes. What what would you say, what would your expectation of your staff be for a turnaround on delivering that product to the community?
Well, we, the first thing we do is ask the community when they need it. Uh and then we look at our schedule and say, can we do it?
Yeah.
Or is this something, you know, I'm, right now, I'm telling a couple of communities, we can do it, we'll start in February. You know, we can do it, we can start now, um depending on on where our staff are.
Okay.
Um you know, the hard thing for me is, you know, um have, not having priced out projects. Um, you know, the, the hard thing for me is, you know, um, have, not having priced out projects in a long time, I'm hoping I'm pricing them right and not losing money. You know, and I'm hoping I'm also treating the community fairly at the same time. But so far they've all been okay. And, and we've got enough experience going on now that we can have a really good idea of what it's gonna cost to deliver a project. So we're, we're feeling better about it than we did six months ago.
And what are you looking at for Bath, for example? That sounded like it was a lot more involved.
Bath, Bath, Bath is, you know, that was negotiated eight hours a week plus two hours for an evening meeting. Um, we would provide staff services for those eight hours in, in city hall. And we took, take in all their subdivision and site reviews. It seems to be, the hours seem to be about right. And that, because of the planner we're using, it was sixty-five dollars a month. Which, you know, is well under the private sector.
Yeah.
More, you know, I, I'm, I'm constantly wondering whether I'm underpricing us. But I can't, I can't legitimately establish what the real hourly rates until I get a year's worth of budget under my wings and know what that is and what are direct and indirect rates. And once I get that, I'll feel comfortable.
Sure. And what's your projected completion for what has Bath either requested or?
Bath, Bath will, Bath will be done in three months.
In total, all in?
To- all in. Because there's an example, they have a professional planner on staff and all we're doing is providing the gap.
Okay.
Maybe a better example is Richmond, um, where we're, we, we've set up a three-stage process. They, their, their ordinance needed some significant help and they had a growth cap that had placed for the last twenty years and growth cap is why the state statute, they're not supposed to last more than three years. And so, so we, you know, they, they brought us in, we read it, we said, you know, what, what you're doing is not right. And you, you just haven't been challenged yet. And when you challenge, you get challenged, you lose. And you don't wanna be in that situation. So we're helping them through the quick ordinance changes to address that. We're gonna help them through the comp plan process, um, probably starting that in the spring. And then, um, we would do a complete comprehensive plan rewrite for them later after that. You know, we're able to divide up what they needed right away to do some fixes.
It's like e- eighteen months or more like two years all in?
I, in, in general, a comprehensive plan is gonna take you two years. Don't try to rush it. It, it, there's, there's, it's a magic process that people underestimate how much the people that get involved really want to be involved. And then the engagement process needs to be taken seriously so you don't waste a lot of time at the end of the process with people saying that you didn't give them an opportunity to participate. And, you know, like I said, process is actually the more complicated, difficult part of the plan. We, we could, you know, I can probably spend a little time in Lincolnville and write a decent plan that would work for everybody, but nobody would agree with it.
They might not anyway.
That, that may very well be, but, but I generally say two years.
Yeah, sure.
And that's, that's years and years of professional experience. The other part of it is, once you start it, don't stop.
Right.
Um, if you stop, you lose momentum, it falls apart, people change, people move on, you lose the original people that are involved and you may as well start all over again when that happens. Brunswick is in that process right now.
Yeah.
They started it, they started it, they started, they were two years starting, the planner left, now they're starting again.
Gotcha. Okay, and last question. I know that you wanted to invite some of our neighbors, uh, communities. Are you working with any of our immediate neighbors yet?
Um, I'm up in Morale, probably in January.
Yeah.
They definitely wanna do a comprehensive plan. I've heard from Sears-Mont that they're interested in doing comprehensive plan work. I have not talked to Northport, I have talked to Isleboro, Allesboro, um, and we're talking to Belfast about just becoming members and providing them more of the advanced city services that we can provide. And, um, I'm not sure that they're ready to make that jump, but I, I hope they do. Because that's a big piece of the critical mass and it'd be a lot easier for us to justify providing a lot of services out there.
And Camden and Rockport are by default involved?
They're, 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 they're. Very much. We're doing, we're doing a project in Camden, we're doing a pro, doing two proj, three, three projects in Camden, two projects in Rockport, um, a major CBPG survey in Rockland. We're trying to help Thomaston with Thomaston Green again. Um, and I think we're getting some traction. Union.
Yep.
Hope, Appleton, we're, we're doing work in each one of those communities.
Can I ask what you're doing in Camden and Rockport?
Camden, we're doing two things. One is that we're gonna probably help them with the civic engagement portion of the Merkinicus River. They got a very large grant to begin looking at what they're gonna take out, what they're gonna keep. And that, having, having spent a couple of years as a development director in Camden on a contract, I know that that's a pretty hot item. And then we're also helping them with the mobile home park. And we're actually, we found a really good federal regional agency that's providing a lot of the services that we would usually charge for. They'll provide for free. So we're coordinating that work to help them get a sewer line extension to that site and, uh, deal with the fact that they pump their sewage tank every day. Can't last forever. Particularly since what I hear is, I haven't seen it, but the, but the honey wagon and the driver are pretty old. So that's, that's an example, the two projects that we're doing there. In Rockport, we're helping with a, with an old project that's out at the corner of seventeen and ninety. That was Richard Remsen, a piece that he did twenty years ago. We're trying to bring that back. We're helping them with sewer line extension. And, um, you know, there's, there are examples where we're doing those services for free because they've got a planner and they're running it, but when he needs assistance or guidance, we step in.
Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
I've, I've, I'm capping myself.
I don't wanna stop you because you're probably gonna ask, ask what I was.
No, please.
No, 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 just leading in, you mentioned the critical mass that you're looking to, to achieve here in Waldo County. In order for little towns like this to receive or have, have more planning options available to it. How closely are you in achieving that? That is, are you relatively confident? I know, I, you're, you're, you're doing the hustings right now and you're going to Morale, Morale next month and but. But are we con, are, should, should we feel confident that MCAG is gonna be in Waldo County's future?
Well, I, I, I would look at it a slightly different way. You know, you have a bunch of communities to the south of you that are members.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, we've got that critical mass. I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about this edge of the county because I think we can serve it as I am about the inland communities who I know are not getting any services. And, and I'm not sure I can reach to that. Um, I, I think I need five or six communities. What I'm hearing and talking to communities, I have five or six communities that wanna talk. So that, that's half the battle, uh, from my perspective. I like to think we'll get there, um, but, you know, I, I started with the commissioners and, and I just didn't.
Right, the, the, the county, the county options is off the date, right?
What was their reaction when you approached them?
Not interested.
Just out of hand?
Or just flat out, wow.
Well, I don't, I s, I don't understand quite, Matthew, because, uh, you, let's, let's say that you all, you, you don't achieve, it, it doesn't work out with Morale and those four or five other towns you mentioned. But where does that leave us? Because we are in Waldo County and even though there's a critical mass down south of us, are we so far north that we're not gonna qualify?
No, no, let me, let me describe it in a different way. When I, when I interviewed for the job, when I, when I took this job, I presented a scenario that I thought was really based to how we were gonna go forward with regional planning. And that was to develop an assessment of the communities by labor market area. And the labor market area for here is Belfast. And, and the circle around Belfast is really the area that I think needs the greatest amount of planning and attention. Small communities do too, I'm learning that every day, but, um, I think that there's a potential to do some really good work around that labor market. And for us, what we're gonna do is design, we're designing all our data development and all our analysis as we bring in the twenty-twenty census by labor market area. So we can, we can track where people work, where they live, everything that happens in between, how the, how the markets work to serve the populations, what are the industries inside those populations? What are the training, what are the educational needs? Where do we need to invest for private businesses? Where do we need to invest for infrastructure? And so for me, the, the importance is the ring around Belfast down to here and going out to the work we're doing in Union. You know, Union is developing itself into a little bit of an employment center. Bill, you know, with Steel Pro going where it is, there's an opportunity to do several more building lots out there that are business-related. And what we know is that, at least right now, that Rockland, Camden and Rock, and Rockport don't have any business development. Warren does. Warren's got an old site that's a dump site that has some real potential. And then Thomaston's the same way, it's got some potential. So we're seeing the rings developed. I think the rockiest ring up here is around the Belfast area bumping into Camden and Rockport. And so I think that, I think it's gonna generically, if, if we can provide enough upfront energy and get it started, it'll get to run itself. There, you had a good regional planning commission here for a number of years. They just ran into the buzzsaw of the previous administration that just eliminated planning capacity and funding for it. And that was a small organization. They just didn't have enough, enough bandwidth to keep going.
Got a technical question too, about technical assistance on page two. Uh, we're talking about, uh, top of the box, Lincolnville dues serves matching funds to the, blank. Okay, so how exactly would that work if they're, if we're looking for a grant through the forty percent match requirement? That type of grant? Okay. I, I, I don't, I don't understand the math and, but that's because I don't understand that.
I think it's probably more important because it's from my perspective. What I'm trying to do is create a planner's position that can assure you that when you call, there'll be somebody there that will answer the phone, probably me, and assign a person to get back to you and answer that question and come and meet with you if you need to have that done.
Okay.
So the, the forty percent, you know, the, the state money I get is roughly, actually I just saw a new number today. It's roughly about fifty thousand dollars a year for assistance. What, forty percent of that, so it brings it to a seventy-five percent, that's, that's a staff person.
Okay.
You know, I roll that in combination with the EDA and the other dues program into about four staff positions. And, and that's the capacity issue up here. I need enough community interest so that I can go and contract for a person that potentially bring a full-time person onboard. You know, we're, um, you know, I, I'm fairly certain, you know, that, um, we are a, uh, we're a training ground for planners. So having someone with Brian's background, business development, my background in planning and development generally, and Meg's background in natural resources, natural resources planning, is enough to bring good, young, trained planners that have a good train, education background right into the field and help them succeed. And that's how we're looking at it.
Gotcha. Thanks. I've got one more question.
Okay.
This, um, I'm on the, the team for the commu, the Heart and Soul team. If we were to extend you an invitation to show up at one of our meetings, would you feel like traveling up to Lincolnville? If it fit your schedule?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, great. Okay.
No, I'd be glad to.
You may be hearing from us, yeah.
Okay. I, I, you know, I, I participated in the Heart and Soul process in Bedford at the end of it. But we, we implemented a lot of what they wanted to do, particularly in the downtown. I participated in the Heart and Soul process in DeMarisgata.
Yeah, good.
Which, um, unfortunately with that one, I think the consultants got, they weren't wrong, but they were over the top for the community in terms of what the community was willing to accept for a development scenario in the downtown.
Well, well, we're, we're, we're just starting out and we love, we love the input, yeah.
Yeah. I, what I, what I think is most important about Heart and Soul, and, and I was kinda curious to hear that you had a comprehensive planning process going at the same time, is that, that the vision process that's part of the comprehensive plan ought to and can come out of the Heart and Soul process. Because that's really what it's about, is try to create that vision.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Josh.
A lot of great questions, uh, vast majority of mine were answered. I'm just curious a little more about the history between, well, about how MCDAD, um, disappeared and, and when MCAG rose up from the ashes.
Whenever. That's only half, half wrong. It, it's really interesting that if it weren't for COVID, I probably wouldn't be here and the agency probably would've failed. They were able, um, to get a series of, they, they, they made some bad planning and management decisions that put them in a position where they could not get certain state grants and, and funding sources. The main technical assistance program is a new program for us. There's no, I don't understand why we weren't getting it. And the same reason I don't understand why we weren't getting the main Department of Transportation money, why we weren't getting main housing assistance money. And obviously we're setting ourselves up to be eligible for the sustainability and resilience of private money. Those together, combined with dues, can give you a solid staff before five people. No question in my mind. But somewhere along the line around two thousand seventeen or eighteen, um, they had, like many regional planning organizations at the time, had most of the state funding either pulled from them or it disappeared. And, and, you know, the, I, there, there, there was not money being spent on regional planning, um, on any sense. So that hurt the, the previous regional organization, it hurt our organization. We had EDA money, um, and a couple other funding sources that kept us alive and kept the doors open. When COVID came, we, the previous executive director, Bill, uh, Daypower, who some of you may now have met somewhere along the line. Bill, um, wrote a really good grant to EDA for what they call EDA supplemental money. And that gave us a funding source that stabilized the organization and put some money in that. I came in and essentially I'm gonna take that money and I'm gonna judiciously use pieces of it over time to begin to build a capacity that allows us to access other funds and creates this permanent flow of revenue for the organization. You know, my background, you know, I started in regional planning, I've built two regional planning organizations back in twenty-four, I bet. Met David actually, um, and so I believe that there's a potential to do that here. You know, I'll tell you, I don't think the dollar twenty-five is enough for dues. I think it'd probably be a little higher when all is said and done. But I think the capacity that we can build will be a really good service for communities that they can use. And, you know, it comes back to what I said before, somebody has to be there to answer the phone, you know, be able to get back to somebody. You know, now we've got email, we've got websites, so you can pop an email to us or a website, um, and, and we'll respond. And we'll respond as soon as we can and we'll get the right person to respond depending on the question. So i- it's a matter of building capacity, Joshua, that, that gets us there. So it's, that's what I'm trying to do, is build that foundation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A comment that, I'm sure you already know this, but Lincolnville's not necessarily in a unique position, but we exist in Waldo County and yet we're married to Camden and Rockport through a couple interlocal agreements. And so we end up, you know, there's a lot of money and management going across the border, so to speak. So we have to wear a couple of different hats when it comes to, you know, regional planning.
Yeah, and, and I think that, you know, I think, I, it, it's fair to say that with the state agencies I talk to, that they look at us as the black hole. From Brunswick to, to, to Waldo County is the black hole where not much planning was going. And as a result, we weren't bringing the resources that we could bring in, you know, and, you know, I, every community is, is fighting individually for scarce resources. And we haven't made an argument on a regional level of why we need them. So, you know, the hope is, is that by kind of creating this capacity and creating this, this examination of the region and the subregions, you know, go back, going back to labor market areas, you know, you've got the Bath, Brunswick labor market area, the Booth Bay Harbor labor market area, the Waldo labor market area. And then you have the, the Rock, Rock, uh, Rockland, Rockport, and then Belfast. And each one of those, you know, is, is kind of different in its own right. You do stride both and, and, and I think kind of interestingly, you stride, you know, co, real coastal Penobscot Bay with, with inland, I mean, your village, local, or your village. It's, it's a different feeling, it's a, it's entirely different.
Oh, yeah, indeed, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions for Matthew? David, anything you want to jump in on?
I might just ask you one question that always, um, pops into my mind when we talk about consultants to assist with comprehensive planning, is how do you avoid the pitfall of the plan being the consultant's plan versus the community's plan?
Well, if you had asked me this question when I was working for Bitterford, I would tell you that I don't like consultants doing the plan. Because I like the community to take on the responsibility for that plan. However, for most of our region, we don't have professional planners. You know, Camden has Jeremy, Rockport has Ryan, you know, Julie, and, uh, Rep are down in, in, in Rockland, and there's nobody in the house. That's it for, for capacity. So even for me, I've had to kind of re-jigger how I look at it. And, and the way I look at it is, is we're your capacity. And therefore we will work to take on the concerns of the community and write that plan for you. And I think that we're not a private consultant, we're a regional planning commission that has the best interest of our municipalities, um, you know, in, in front of us at all times. You know, we, we serve the municipalities, that's our goal, to serve the municipalities, serve what they need. And I think we represent the local community interest pretty well. You know, I, I think it's always, you know, it's why I, I'd like to find a planner that lives up in this area so that they have a better sense of what's going on here and have a little more tie to it. But I, I think because we're, we're invested in the region, you know, I'm invested in the region. You know, I, I've lived in the area for forty years. I'm invested in Brunswick to, to, certainly to, um, the Lincolnville edges. You know, I didn't know that much about Waldo County, frankly, you know, I'm learning. Commissioners were my first lesson.
A hard lesson.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
Um, well, thank you so much for your time, this presentation, answering all of our questions. It was highly informative.
My pleasure, and, and pass the word.
Yeah.
We will. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Drive, drive safely.
Well, hopefully I'll be able to pick up the Patriots game pretty quick.
That's right, yeah.
Priorities. Any follow-up on this at this time? Okay.
Take care all, if I don't talk to you, I have a wonderful holiday.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Bye-bye, bye.
Bye-bye. All right, um, moving along, we have harbor matters before us. Um, it is our duty to both set the harbor fees and to review and revise if necessary and finally approve the qualified mooring inspector list. And a consideration with the fees as recommended by the harbor committee. There's also a note in there regarding, um, a late fee for failure to inspect and get your stuff back to us in time. And so I will entertain a motion, please.
I move that the board adopt the harbor committee recommended harbor fee schedule for twenty twenty-three along with a late fee of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, just one real quick question. Does that motion need to specify what that late fee is about for late inspections? I mean, and does the motion need to include that?
I'm going to throw that back at our town administrator for technical.
I believe the harbor ordinance says that that late fee is for the mooring inspection.
Yeah.
Because the other things, if you, if you don't pay by a certain time, it doubles. And then if you don't pay by the next certain time, you lose the privilege.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, thank you very much. And if no one has any thoughts or amendments for the qualified mooring inspectors, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve the harbor masters recommended list of qualified mooring inspectors for twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, discussion?
I do have one question. Have we touched base with all of this list, everybody on the list? Have not.
Okay, some of these don't.
Yeah, the fear is actually. There's definitely people on those lists that don't do inspections here. But that doesn't, but that didn't necessarily mean they're not qualified to do them. People just either don't contact them or they don't actively market themselves.
Well, I will say that there is one individual who is out of the business completely.
Let's cross them off.
Who's that?
Rockport charters.
Rock, yeah.
So we should, we should delete that individual for sure. But the rest are reasonably up to date, yeah. So with that amendment, uh, would you care to amend your motion to say the amended qualified mooring?
I will, yes. Do you want me to say excluding, uh, Rockport charters?
Sure.
And then, what did I just say? I move that the board approve the harbor masters recommended list of qualified mooring inspectors for twenty twenty-three excluding Rockport charters.
Okay, and?
I'll second that amended.
Thank you. And, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, thank you all very much. And, uh-huh, moving into our favorite time of year, we have our budget review, town meeting, and election schedule, um, to gaze upon and appreciate. But in addition to that, uh, we do need to make a decision on how the annual town meeting is going to be held. If we're going to go back to the two-step format of, um, ballot voting on the Tuesday and then the open portion of town meeting being within that seven days. I, I'm going to throw it out there, I like the open portion of town meeting. I like the discourse that can come up around the budget and people can ask questions. So I would advocate for that, but.
I agree with you, yeah, same.
Yeah.
Yep, so, so would I.
Great, well, would someone care to, well, does anyone have any thoughts or feelings about the other, uh, scheduled events that really don't have a lot of flexibility? Hopefully everyone's going to be highly caffeinated and ready to go on that Wednesday and Thursday in February, on the fifteenth and sixteenth. Cool?
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, we'll just keep an eye out for some updates on the other TBDs that should be coming in, and I will entertain a motion.
I move that the annual town meeting in June twenty twenty-three be conducted with ballot voting on Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, followed by the open portion of the town meeting on Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. And that the annual town meeting warrant be prepared to indicate such.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, thank you all very much. And you'll see before you a utility poll application from Heather Hill Road. Um, it's my understanding that the tree steward and our public facilities director have reviewed it and don't have any objections. And so if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve and sign the application for poll location permit, number LT zero one seven dash two-two and dated eleven sixteen twenty-two, as submitted by the Lincolnville Telephone Company for three utility polls to be located within the right-of-way of the Heather Hill Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, thank you all very much. And then we have the special town meeting warrant containing the five proposed articles, um, that you all worked on at the meeting that I missed. David, do you want to speak to this at all?
Uh, sure. So we've taken, this is a draft, still a draft because obviously there's blanks in there and there's things that say approval by Board of Slackman or approval by Budget Committee, of which you haven't done any approvals or, um, but, uh, we had ended up with, um, four articles, separate and distinct. The first is obviously to elect a moderator. The second was regarding the plumbing and heating thing here. We've actually talked to three different contractors who would do different components of the work here. We added it up and put a little contingency to it and came up with sixty-five hundred dollars. The second is the float work at Briesmer. That's a little less certain, but we've got some pricing from, or some estimates from a local supplier of materials who says, you know, well, I can't guarantee that these are going to be the prices when you come in and buy it, but this is what a two-by-twelve, pressure-treated, this length, got's now. We have talked to somebody who's capable of doing the work. It's not likely to be twenty-five hundred dollars unless when we take the decking off, we find more rot. But every time I've taken a, done a renovation project, it's always been something else. So we've, all of these have a little contingency, I would say, within them, uh, until we get to the next one. But again, if we don't spend it at, when the project's done, it would go back into an assigned fund balance and be available for the voters to appropriate elsewhere. Uh, the fourth is, we've talked about this ad nauseam, um, on the resurfacing of tennis courts. We actually have a quote, uh, that's why that dollar amount is, like, to the dollar. Those folks are ready to go, uh, as soon as we sign the proposal. The fifth is the, um, uh, electric vehicle charging station for down at Lincolnville Beach. We've identified a prime location for that adjacent to the, uh, accessible parking in the beach parking lot. It has to be on town-owned property. It's one of the grant conditions, or we probably could find an easement somewhere from somebody, but that puts another wrinkle. We've talked to two vendors. One is kind of on the fence and the other's coming. They've done multiple around the state and it sounds like it'll be a soup to nuts proposal. We hope to have that blank filled in with the question marks for your next meeting. I will say, the, um, the draft, uh, has been reviewed by council and it's fine as to form and function, unnecessarily to the items because you don't really care. One of the things that we have, we've put together these things out, suggested that it be coming out of the American Rescue Plan Act monies. The other possible funding source might be excise tax. We seem to be trending on a good note there. But we're five months through a twelve-month year and things happen. My suggestion is a bird in the hand that you know you have makes it a little more palatable than hoping the revenue projections coming in as possible, so. That's, and obviously you can't, at this point, if we were, before taxes were committed, you could have asked the voters if they wished to raise and appropriate, in other words, do it out of taxes. But that, that ship sailed come August, whatever we did, so. I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Appreciate Dave's, the other Dave's work, doing a lot of the legwork on this.
So basically the date in January will be determined once we work backwards from the other information falling into place.
Yeah, we've got two deadlines in January. The, uh, tennis court resurfacing, um, the proposal that we have, they said you have this window. And that's January twentieth, I'm going to make that up, somewhere near there. Uh, the other is the, um, application for the efficiency main grant is January seventeenth. So the town meeting will have to be before January seventeenth because we'll have to get that at, if, if that mon, funding is approved, we'd have to get that application in. We'll be, we'll have that done and ready to go, but obviously not going to apply for something we don't have the matching funds to, or our share of the funds to do. The wrinkle comes, seventeenth being the earliest deadline, that's a Tuesday. The day before is a holiday. I don't know if you ever have a town meeting on holiday, but that would be, might necessarily be my suggestion, which means if we're going to have other votes, we've got a bunch of stuff we've got to compress in here. We have to get, fill in the blanks. You folks will have to make a recommendation when we have those numbers. We have to get a Budget Committee recommendation, so we're going to have to get your recommendation, Budget Committee recommendation, warrant approved and signed and posted seven days prior to the meeting, so. Doing a little judgment.
So you're going to end up telling us when we're going to meet, essentially.
My guess is, uh, the, let's see, seventeenth is a Tuesday, sixteenth is a Monday, fifteenth, fourteenth, maybe, the twelfth of January be a, be a Thursday? You want to have a town meeting, a special town meeting on a Thursday?
Why not?
Yeah.
Josh is looking at a calendar. Um, uh, do you think that we will need a large venue for this town meeting?
I do not. I wish I, I wish I, I wish I was saying that I did, but I don't think we will.
Yeah. I, I, I do not.
Perhaps this room with more seating put out?
Yes.
That sounds good. And if, and if there's overflow, there's overflow. People could be in the halls and come in, raise their hand.
We'll figure it out. Or we can move to a different venue if we have to.
So then the other general concurrent you're looking for is that we want to move on all these articles?
You, you, if you see anything that's, uh, way out of line, or if there's something else that we've somehow forgotten, but I think we're pretty good at getting one, you, tenure of the meetings on thing. If you want to have number three be number two, and number two be number five, and number fi, you know, if there's some reason you think that politically or otherwise, there's some impetus to, for some reason, to have something earlier rather than later?
No, no, really, any questions I have related to this, I wasn't present for the initial. initial conversation. There were some, in the minutes, there was, but it's outside the purview of this conversation. It's just, you know, follow-up questions and information that the board had asked to have clarified in terms of long-term expenses and maintenance and upkeep and that sort of thing. But that's not, doesn't necessarily have anything to do with this conversation. It is a little dismening having all those question marks in that particular article, but my, my research, you know, in, in the, the minutes were helpful in giving a ballpark, anyway. So, I mean, I, yeah, I guess I don't see an issue with the structure, the format, the wording, the suggestions. So you're not looking for a motion, just sort of a general nodding of like, let's keep moving this direction?
Right. I mean, if there was some glaring error or something that just seemed like, oh my goodness, we didn't realize that it might cost us, you know, $2,500 to fix this, don't do it. Don't put the floats in, you know, I'm making this up, obviously. Don't put the floats in at Breezemere.
Yeah.
Um, you know, be better to know now than later.
Yep. Okay. So are you?
I think it's great.
Did we tick the boxes for you, David?
Yeah.
Yep. And we'll, what we'll do now, we're, like I said, we're, we're filling in and refining the, the blank and the numbers, and try to coordinate a meeting of the Budget Committee so that they can
Yeah.
get their recommendation shortly after you make your recommendations. And I think we can make the deadline.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you for pulling this together.
Um, it's a team effort here. We've got a lot of people in the building, pulling on the rope, so that's helpful.
Fabulous. So if there's nothing else on that, Steve, Josh, broadband update?
Uh, well, we had a meeting on December 1st, and that was Susan Corbett and finesse the digital inclusion plan a little more. We have a, a final draft that, that, that members will be reviewing on Thursday, and then, uh, once that's, once that's done, then we'll be presenting that and the feasibility study on the 27th, and a draft charge for implementing that digital inclusion plan. Is there anything else?
Okay. Any questions for Josh or Steve? No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good work. Um, and updates? Karen, you got an update for us? Josh, do you have any other updates for us?
No, just looking forward to that, that solid waysward meeting next month.
Yeah. Yep. Yep, I bet.
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
No.
Steve, and neither do I, so that's easy peasy. We do have the treasurer and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
I move that the board approve and sign the treasurer and payroll warrants.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? And if there is no further business the board wishes to attend to, I will entertain a final motion.
Moved, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you all very much.
Hands go a little higher quicker on that.
Every time.